The April 17th meeting of the Corrine Township Zoning Commission will please come to order. Would anybody please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have the roll call, we would ask everyone to please silence their cellphones. Will we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferring?
Here.
Mr. Grody?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Westfall?
Here. Mr. Taylor not being here, Mr. Gerring, you're up. The first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the February 20th meeting. Does anybody have any changes or additions?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
It's being moved and seconded that we approve the minutes as written. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Gerring?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Yes. Next is public address. This is where, if you have anything you'd like to bring before the zoning commission that is not on the agenda, this is where you can do it. Would anybody like to speak? Okay. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for case number ZA 2018, Dejaun1, a text amendment for medical marijuana. Does staff have a presentation?
Yes, we do. This is a zoning text amendment for you this evening. This has been initiated by both township trustees and by the zoning commission by motion. The procedure for a text amendment to the code is the same as a map amendment, or similar to a map amendment. It's initiated, it's drafted, and then forwarded to the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission for recommendation. They make a recommendation back to this zoning commission. This zoning commission then holds a public hearing and forwards a recommendation on to the township trustees. The township trustees will also hold a public hearing and then take final action regarding your recommendation. This particular matter has been going through the Ohio Legislature and is now at sort of a regulatory forming process in the state to open up medical marijuana. And the purpose of this is to set zoning regulations regarding specific aspects of medical marijuana. The first thing that we're proposing to do is to add a definition to Chapter 16 for medical marijuana, and this follows the structure of the state regulations. And it shall mean the uses related to the cultivation, processing, or retail dispensing of medical marijuana, and any business building structure or land used for the cultivation, processing, or retail dispensing of medical marijuana as defined by Ohio Revised Code Section 3796.01a2. There is nothing in this that regulates the actual use of medical marijuana. If it is prescribed through a physician and a Corrine Township resident has a prescription, they are free to use it. As a matter of fact, that is one of the things that the state has not allowed local communities to restrict. The state has allowed local communities to set up zoning regulations that deals with three aspects, and that is cultivation, that's the growing, the processing, and that's the actual kind of pharmaceutical end of the marijuana process, and retail dispensing, that's where you actually go to pick up your prescription, the consumer end of that. So there's really three aspects to this definition. The reason why I bring this up is that the proposal is based on, we've had a continuing moratorium in the township regarding medical marijuana in anticipation of the state legislature coming up with these regulations. We can choose to regulate any or all of the three aspects. For instance, we could permit the cultivation but prohibit, you know, the dispensing or the processing, or, you know, any of the others. We can also allow them with certain conditions. And so what we have heard in various seminars Jenna and I both have attended is that the legal advice is if we want to regulate it, first you have to define it in your code. And we've defined it broadly with all three of those things in the definition. And then the second aspect of it is to add it to our table of uses. In 7.2.1, we have residential table of uses. In 8.1, we have business uses. Also, in our planned districts, like our planned residential business, industrial, so forth, those refer back to these tables of uses. So virtually anything that you find on a zoning map, or everything you find in a zoning map in Corrine Township is covered by these tables of uses. The use table is set up with four categories. First is called a permitted use in the table, that's symbolized by a P. We have permitted with conditions, that's a P with an asterisk. The table will also refer to a separate section. They'll refer to specific conditions under which something is allowed. C is a conditional use. That means that that use may be suitable for a certain neighborhood but needs a level of public review. Those are referred to our Board of Zoning Appeals as conditional uses. And then prohibited uses, and those are just shaded out. And that means that that specific use is not allowed within the given category within the table. This is what the table looks like. This is just an excerpt of what our zoning table looks like. The proposal is to add medical marijuana into that list in both the residential table and in the commercial table, and then basically shading out all the different districts, meaning that this use is prohibited in all districts. This is coming as a recommendation primarily because I believe we don't know exactly how the regulatory process is going to play out in the state. This is probably erring on the side of being conservative. The concern is that if we simply do nothing, then when this is allowed in the state, anything could open up within the township, the cultivation. I mean, there's all sorts of things. I think all the cultivation sites have been designated, but there's always a chance that more may in the future, the dispensing, the processing, et cetera. But if they were to come in the township and become established, we would not have the ability to regulate that use as long as they fell within whatever the state statute allows. And the question is, they become sort of a grandfathered status. So if something does come in that's objectionable, we would have no control to withhold that. Versus, if we wait and see how this process plays out statewide, how the use is accepted within communities, integrates within communities, we would have the ability to come back at a future time and maybe break apart that definition into its components and decide if cultivation should be done just within certain zoning districts, or dispensing within certain zoning districts, or be able to set up special conditions that makes the use more compatible with what's going on within given zoning districts. So the outright prohibition approach that we're taking here is probably the conservative approach with the thought, at some point in the future, we may see that there are some acceptable levels of these different uses within the township, and we can add them back into the code as we see fit. So that's basically how this proposal works. It has been recommended unanimously by the Hamilton County Planning Commission to this board. They did express some concerns, I think more in a broad sense, that if too many communities, and they did have a list in there in your staff report of other communities that have taken this prohibition route, if everybody takes the prohibition route and it's not allowed anywhere within the state of Ohio, the legislature may say, okay, you're being way too conservative on this, and they will override local ability to regulate this. But I think that's fairly remote, and Hamilton County Planning Commission thought that was fairly remote. You also have a letter in your packet from our chief of police who is recommending adoption of this proposal, as is staff. So is there any question about how this works?
Mr. Ferring?
No.
Mr. Gerring?
No questions at all.
Mrs. Smith?
The decision that's made on this now and amendments that we're going to do, is it possible that the zoning appeals, they could go to zoning appeals and this be overturned?
No. No, this is a legislative matter. Once it is adopted by the Board of Trustees, the, I hate to give legal advice because I'm definitely not an attorney, but it can even be taken to referendum to the voters to be able to overturn the ordinance, or if there were some legal process that was in error, somebody could basically sue the township trustees.
Okay, thank you.
This group is simply making the recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
Mr. Grody?
Should we, just for the sake of covering all of our bases in the tables, should the two words "medical marijuana" also appear under agricultural uses, commercial uses, and institutional public uses, just to make it crystal clear?
I'm not sure it's necessary because we have defined it according to the Ohio Revised And if it's prohibited, like, we don't have an agricultural zone. Agriculture is permitted in certain low-density residential zones. So if it's already prohibited in, say, the R1, R2 zones where you can do agriculture, it's not going to be permitted.
I'm just concerned that if I were an applicant and not well-versed in all of this, and I'd say, oh, well, you've got it here, but you don't have it here. You have it stated in this area, but not in these two areas or another area.
I would not be concerned.
Okay.
Only in the sense that we know what we've defined, and we've clearly said it's prohibited in every zone possible.
The law that was passed for allowing medical marijuana, aren't there 12 permits that were issued or something like that of those that can actually grow it and process it and so forth?
Correct.
Have those 12 permits, have they identified sites with those, or could those go anywhere?
As I understand, those sites are already selected. There's also limitations here. I'm not an expert, and I haven't been keeping up with, like, up-to-the-minute things, but as I understand, the dispensaries for Hamilton County, there's a certain number, and I've, at least was conveyed at Hamilton County Planning Commission, that those have already been determined, and none of them are in Corrine.
Okay. So then it would almost take legislative actions to allow more sites if somebody wanted to start one in Corrine Township?
That's a good question. I'm not sure whether the number of sites and the locations are determined by law or by the regulations.
Okay.
There's those two components that are going on in the State House. But in any event, this measure would prohibit those, at least for now, in Corrine Township.
The chair would now entertain a motion to open the public comment, part of the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second that.
It's being moved and seconded that we open a public comment here, portion of the public hearing. We need your roll call.
No, we don't.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The first speaker is Mr. Acton.
I'm going to second Mr. Westfall.
Okay.
I'm going to stick out Mr. Underhese and Vinton. Thank you for letting the public speak. I have been a resident of Corrine Township for over 45 years. It was my duty to come and say my piece. Some of these questions, I don't know who to direct them to, whether it be to Marty or to the board, or to Jenna, or whoever. But the first question is location of these dispensaries. Does anybody have any idea where they're going to be, up and down Corrine Avenue, or Springdale Road, or Galverson Road, or where are they going to be at?
They're not going to be anywhere, if we pass this.
I'm just asking questions to have in the back of our old minds, Mr. Westfall, that when this comes up again, what can we do? How will these people pay for this medical marijuana? Will it be by cash, by credit card, by voucher? How? The answer that I've received so far has got to be cash, which brings up two problems. Federal banks aren't allowed to accept medical marijuana or marijuana payments. Number two, puts a stress on my pocketbook. Police chief, which I always hope is going to be here tonight, is going to open up places for robbery. More trouble outsiders coming in, wanting to rob people that are leaving these facilities for their medicines that they need for whomever. I happen to have some pains, too. I went to the doctor and got a prescription. This is just one of them. The other one's in my pocket. This is for hydrocortisone. The other one is a more powerful painkiller. I have to go to Walgreens or pharmacy to get this medicine. Why should we have a store at the corner of Corrine and Springdale available to sell They should go through either a hospital or pharmacy, people that can control it, and they know what, they're passing out. There's nothing in what Marty has presented tonight, or anything from the state, or federal government saying whom can handle this medical marijuana. To make this real short, at 5:25 tonight, on Channel 12, the FDA is looking at a product called, forgive me if I don't pronounce it right, I just wrote it down quickly, Diofax. It's, hopefully by June, it'll be a medical marijuana that comes in a bottle, it's a liquid form, and will handle a lot of the problems that people are using medical marijuana for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, before you leave, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir. I'll answer if I can.
I'm trying to sort out in my mind, are you speaking in favor of what was presented tonight, or are you speaking in opposition to what is that mean?
I think we need another drugstore, that's my feeling, in Corrine Township. I'm against it, having medical marijuana dispensed in Corrine Township. Let it go through doctors' offices or through pharmacies, not a freestanding store.
So that dovetails in with what we're trying to pass tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker on the list is Dawn Smith.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am in support of medical marijuana. I don't think any of you were at the trustee meeting last month when I spoke about it. I'm a retired nurse, medically retired. And in the course of my career, I really never thought this would be on my plate to discuss, but here I am today, because I've always been opposed to medical marijuana, period, just period. But I've had patients, one of which was a child, a toddler, that got sick out of nowhere. Doctors never knew what made that child sick. They never have had an answer for it. The parent was forced after a year and a half with his child, and I was a private duty nurse spending eight hours a day in the home. After a year and a half of trying everything possible in the medical society, they gave up all medical principles and went to form a medical marijuana. Of course, I had to leave the home, couldn't be involved in it. I would have been, had I stayed, or had the company stayed, we all would have lost our license here. So I had to leave that family. And then I ran across another young woman, who I'd say was in her mid-20s, dove into a pool, she was swimming, going to see Jimmy Buffett that day, and broke her neck. Now, yes, she may have been high and drinking, that's what I joke about, were you drinking, honey, were you toking? Because she liked to laugh about it. She said, probably I was. But in the long story short with that young lady, is she was a paraplegic. I mean, she had no use of her arms and legs. What got her to the paraplegic portion, she started using marijuana on a regular basis rather than all the medicine and props that were given to her, the braces, and she regained the use of her arms, about, I'd say, between 80% use. She didn't have total control, but it was, as she gave up all the other principles, that's what made, got her to that success level. So I wonder, it has come across my career, she too had given up the disciplines of the medical world to have medical marijuana. And that's someone who lives in Corrine Township. I'm thinking of my counties, the different townships around. She still resides in Corrine Township, but I was in her home visiting her as a nurse, not as a friend. So I, again, that was one I had to leave. I didn't know about the use of medical marijuana until I went back and checked on him a few months later. The other question, I wanted to ask you, sir, on what you laid out with the P, PC, or the gray area, is there any difference whatsoever in the shaded, totally prohibited area and PC, the asterisk, PC, that we can come back to it?
It's kind of one or the other, or, let me get back to that. Within the PC with the asterisk, the C for shaded, prohibited, it's one of those four, it's not a combination of. And the proposal is to prohibit the use in all zone classifications within the township. Just to clarify, if somebody has a valid prescription for medical marijuana, there's nothing in this that would prohibit them taking and using it within a township, they would have an inconvenience of having to go to another township, another place in Hamilton County that allows it to get it from a dispensary, but that can bring it back to the township and use it legally. And this will not have an effect. As a matter of fact, we are not allowed by the state enabling legislation to take away that right, I guess, that's been given to our residents.
So if we switch, rather than to use the gray shaded area, to use the PC, that means that it is prohibited under certain conditions?
No, it's outright prohibited under any condition.
Under the PC?
As proposed.
As proposed now, but under PC, is that absolutely prohibited? Everything is, except for a rights of a patient?
If we were to propose to permit it, I'm sorry.
I'll turn my microphone on. If we were to propose to allow it with conditions, then we would need to put a P in that table with little asterisks, and then we would have to actually spell out those conditions verbally. We would have to say, under what conditions, that those things would be allowed.
That's what I'm asking you, as our zoning commission, to consider, because I do have seen the good for medical marijuana, and as you mentioned, from Channel 12, they spoke of a medicine that will come out, is coming out, it's a different name than what I heard on Channel 1. So we both recorded, so can't wait to hear that. But the FDA is in the process, and I want to look at this at a different angle, if you don't mind. They're in the process of creating a medicine out of medical marijuana that, once again, does not have THC in it. Because they're in the process, that should show us, number one, there must be something to it, or the federal government wouldn't get their piece of the pie out of it. But I wish that, you know, I wish it was regulated tighter. But they do know what strengths and how they're working it. As far as hospitals dispensing it, or another drugstore, they know their credit limitations as far as cash and banking, and they've all handled it in other states as well as here. And I think you might have some more insight on that, Mike, than I have. It's just, I have followed it through the news, never thinking that I would be here. But now that it is here, I really had to give myself a good look in the mirror. Was I going to let my personal biasness, and I do have a biasness against marijuana, I cannot go along with recreational marijuana, I can't. I think that recreational use of it, at very least, is habit-forming, if not addicting. And that's where I'm looking at myself in the mirror, in my own personal constitution. But I don't want to tell any resident here in Corrine Township, as doctors are bracing up and have taken their classes mandatory, for them to write a prescription, and it is prescribed, even at a store, for them to write that prescription. I don't want to take that right away from other patients who will use it, or maybe could use it in their future, very near future, instead of harmful opiates that we are presently using. And I'm a person who does take opiates regularly. It's just my lot in life, after I got ran over, and presently, I'm looking at four more surgeries. So, and the choices are limited, how I can control my, while I can't control my life. So I'm just asking you, please, to give it a little bit thought as to those people who will one day need this, and it is being used already in other states to treat opioid addiction. There's another use for it. So that's all I really had to say and ask that question, and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Feathery?
I've got several articles I've pulled out of the paper, just pretty current, give some insight on some of the things that we've been talking about. So I'd like to just list some of those, or go through some of them. One thing it does say, it said up to 57 dispensaries licensed are expected to be granted sometime next month, giving the operators less than six months to set up shop. Fifty-seven. We've got 88 counties. So there's going to be counties without a dispensary, the way I read this, at least, you know, as of right now. Yeah, up to 57 dispensaries, and we've got 88 counties, so that's that little tidbit, I guess, for whatever it's worth. Another thing that was in here, I've been collecting these things, just so you know, just so I could talk about it a little bit, because I don't think there's just so I could talk about it a little bit, because I don't think there's too many of us in this room know too much about it. You all don't know that much about it, I don't know that much about it, Marty don't know that much about it, and the rest of us don't know that much about it. So I think that's important, to try to gather a little information, so we can talk about it sort of intelligently, anyway. One of those things here is just what folks use, and then going to work, or maybe not going to work. This is a guy's opinion, but he's a professor, he says, "Most employers, they're going to prohibit it for now, and they'll let employees know they run the risk of being terminated," predicted Justin So-and-so, he's an assistant professor at Ohio Wesleyan, who studies the marijuana industry. It says, "The state's medical marijuana law, on track to going into effect September, allows people with 21 specific diseases or conditions to get a recommendation, not prescriptions, recommendation, from a doctor to obtain drug in the form of a plant, an oil, a tincture, or edible, or patch. Under law, it can be vape, but not smoked, medical marijuana." So, looking at it from somebody that maybe had some real issues, and looking, tried to not get addicted to some things, but I'm not so sure you don't get, wouldn't get addicted to marijuana also, so. And I guess for us to have the, you know, the dispensary here, we've got 58,000 people, you think maybe 1% would maybe be wanting it here, or 2%? Or even 10% is only 5,800 people out of 58,000? And I think it's more like 1% or 2% would want it here. My main fear, fear, and I use that word, we've got enough issues in our township already. We've gone downhill over the years, people have let it go that way, legislators that we've had. We have check cash in places, never used to have that years ago, pawn shops, we never used to have that, blood place, a place you can sell your blood, right down the street. And I think this would just be another, another thing that's detrimental to the county overall, or to the township overall. Overall, we're a bedroom community. We're not, we're not a commercial community. About 17, 18% of our township is commercial. 30% is utilities, and the rest, basically 80%, we're bedroom community, that's what we are. So what I've seen and read most of it, the successful communities, they don't want it. I mean, the successful communities, where they've got great property values, they don't want this at all in their community. Things all make sense. What I think's going to happen, and I think this is about following the money, and I'll use that term, that's what happened in 215, when our county prosecutor was following the money. He wanted that recreational marijuana in the state of Ohio, because he was following the money. Our guy, Stern Prosecutor, was following the money, he ignored federal law, though. And that's the other part of it, it really bothers me. It's against federal law. And I think everybody's rolling the dice, and someday, they say, "Well, it's going to, well, it'll be legal." Well, maybe it will be. But till then, I don't know that we should get too involved in it too much, at all. Then the other thing, I truly believe what was going to happen, once they set up the dispensaries for medical marijuana, medical pot, let's call it, when they get the recreational, where do you think they're going to sell it? At the same dispensaries. We don't need that in Corrine Township. The people that are pushing it, some, they're trying to follow the money. They're not worried about the medical marijuana in Corrine Township, they're trying to follow the money. And that's just my opinion, and thank you, and please do not, please approve this as written, which doesn't mean that you're not, you don't want it here. It's just written kind of strange, but we all know that, right? We don't want them here, is that all correct? So however you structure your vote, please do it right. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Bernie. Thank you.
Any questions?
No, it was pretty clear. Mr. Ingeres?
Good evening, board. I came tonight to speak against the text amendment, as, I guess, as the staff is recommending here. You know, in my time as a trustee on the board, we did have the moratorium that Marty talked about, and that was to see what these rules and regulations would be. They were not finalized until recently, and that's when I had heard about the proposed text amendment. I did have a chance, though, during the moratorium, to look at this issue, to look at the studies and the articles that some people before me mentioned, and there is a lot out there. But one that I found to be very intriguing was from the University of Texas, Dallas. They conducted a study across all 50 states between the years of 1990 and 2006, and their study concentrated on 11 states that legalized marijuana for medical use. Over that time, or since that time, obviously, a lot more states have legalized it. But what that study showed was that medical marijuana legalization is not predictive of higher crime rates, and may actually be related to reduction in rates of homicide and assault, while robbery and burglary rates were unaffected by medical marijuana legislation. You know, and that would directly contradict the assertion that medical marijuana legalization actually creates some sort of hotbed for increased crime. The researchers noted that their findings were concurrent with prior research suggesting that medical marijuana dispensaries may actually reduce crime in the immediate vicinity. You know, and there was some discussion, too, about, I think Bernie had talked about 57 or so dispensaries throughout the 88 counties. And it actually goes even farther than that, and states that there will be up to a maximum of three dispensaries throughout Hamilton County. So, obviously, Hamilton County is one of the largest counties in Ohio, Corrine Township one of the largest townships in the entire state. So when you think about access, I think it's important to consider, as Marty alluded to, that there is some concern here, that if neighboring communities do this exact same thing, that people who need and want safe access to medical marijuana won't have it. We have an opiate crisis that speakers before me mentioned. That opiate crisis is throughout our country, and especially here in our region. It's been shown that medical marijuana is safer than prescription painkillers. Experts believe that the rise in heroin use could be in part due to prescription painkiller abuse. When people become hooked on prescription painkillers, but they can't get a hold of any, they often turn to heroin. So those people who peddle the old myth that marijuana is a gateway drug should be leveling that accusation at prescription painkillers, which have a great deal more in common with harmful and illegal drugs like heroin than cannabis does. Medical cannabis is non-addictive, and there's no evidence that you need to constantly up your dosage to developing a tolerance to it. Are we not the same township that has shown compassion and leadership by reaching out to help people with heroin overdoses overcome their addictions, and to in turn reduce crime? Corrine's Quick Response Team does amazing work to help people, and I'm glad that this program wasn't blocked by fear. How can we, as a community, show compassion for people who overdose on heroin, but not loved ones who suffer from epilepsy and seizure disorders, Alzheimer's, cancer, Crohn's disease, multiple sclerosis, Parkinson's disease, PTSD, sickle cell anemia, and many other diseases that are permitted for people to use medical marijuana by the state of Ohio? Now, maybe you guys don't know somebody who could benefit from it, but if you did, I think it would change your vote. There's some mention, too, about the fear of the federal government interfering with state implementation of medical marijuana. In 2018, Congress gave Attorney General Jeff Sessions $0 to go after medical marijuana laws. Just recently, President Trump followed through with his campaign promise to leave marijuana laws up to individual states. The original rationale for this text amendment was that there's inconsistencies between federal and state laws, and that the Trump administration was going to crack down on medical marijuana and recreational marijuana in states. Just recently, though, as I said, he is not going to do that. The federal government will not interfere with Ohio's medical marijuana program. So I would ask you to reconsider, and I hope that you recommend that this text amendment be denied. Any questions at all?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
What position did the Board of Trustees take on initiating this text amendment? How many were in favor of it, how many were not?
I believe that vote took place in January. Just to be clear, I wasn't on the board then. The vote was three to nothing to proceed with the text amendment. I will say, at that meeting, I was the only person who stood up and spoke on the issue. But, but there was also, obviously, an understanding that there would be multiple public hearings, including tonight, and also, they'll have another hearing, I guess that'll be at the next May trustee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The Chair would now entertain a motion to close the public comment. Motion so moved.
Second?
We move to second, that we close the public comment section of the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
Actually, to close the public hearing.
Not the public hearing, the public, the public comment section of the public hearing. Sorry.
You do need a roll call for that. For that matter, you do need a roll call.
To close the public hearing, we do, I know. I'm sorry.
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Gerring?
Yes.
Mr. Westphal?
All right. Motion carrying. Okay, does anybody have any comments? Mr. Grody?
Still deep in thought, but--
Would you like us to come back?
No. The brain just is going to operate slower to later today, gets, so.
I understand.
What we heard, Marty, you say that this is a very conservative approach right now, what we're considering. It could be amended in the future if we needed to, for whatever reason, if I heard you correctly.
That's true. Any provision in your zoning resolution can be amended by initiation by this board.
Okay. What I'm hearing, the concern that's in my mind, is the apparent small number of places that people can access the medical marijuana, if they have a legal prescription statewide, with the number of, what we heard earlier, 57 dispensaries, 88 counties. I'm thinking of the people of my generation age, so on and so forth, who have a more difficult time getting around from location to location, and not knowing how close the nearest dispensary would be, if we have any idea of that at all, to our locale. Do we have any, does anybody know?
Just that there'll be three in Hamilton County.
Okay, but the sites have not been identified yet?
I'm not aware of where they are.
Okay. So I'm vacillating between, do we take a conservative approach right now, sort of a wait-and-see with this text amendment, and then have the opportunity to adjust it later if we need to, and if the authority allows us to, you know, or the need arises for us to do that. But on the other hand, I see the limited access points for the people who legally need the product. So those are my comments. Mr. Westphal?
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
I probably asked this question at the last meeting, but I would like to just reaffirm it. Is there a place within Corrine Township that it would be allowed, or could be allowed, if things change?
If you adopt this amendment, there would be no place in Corrine Township where it would be allowed for dispensing, cultivation, and processing.
At this time, right? I mean, if at a later date, it came back up again, is there a spot on this chart, on the table that you gave, was that it would be permitted?
Not as currently proposed. If you do not accept this amendment, it opens the possibility that we could have a dispensary, we could have a processing facility, or a cultivation facility.
And this will eliminate the moratorium that we presently have?
It would basically nullify it.
Okay.
The moratorium is temporary, it will expire at a certain date.
That would be in August, correct?
I believe so.
A follow-up question to Mrs. Smith, Marty, if, is it the state that's going to say, "This dispensary is going right here, and this one's going here, and this one's going here"? The physical locale, the physical location?
Yeah, as I understand, people have to petition or apply to be a dispensary, and then the state grants them a license to do so.
So, if I applied and was granted a license, then I could, if I hear you correctly, I could go to any locale in the state of Ohio and put that dispensary there, if I--
As long as there's no local prohibition against it.
Okay.
And given that the state has allowed only a limited number within the state, and they've geographically dispersed those.
But it's not the state saying, "One's going to be in Sim Township, one's going to be in Corrine Township, and one's going to be in Delhi Township"?
No.
It's up to the person who gets the license to secure the site?
Correct.
Mr. Gerring?
I, I still have significant issues with it being against federal law, and frankly, it's an all-cash business. There's going to be substantial cash holdings in the building, because the federal bank's banking system is prohibited from accepting the cash. I, with those things in mind, I don't see how it can be beneficial, frankly, to our community. And I'm a senior with many, I'm having many operations. I may be on this stuff in the future, possibly, I don't know. The fact of the matter is, from a community standpoint, I don't see--
[inaudible]
From a community resident's standpoint, I don't see any benefit to the community for having a dispensing station, so that's my feeling on it.
Mr. Ferring?
I don't have a whole lot to say about it, I've listened to everything, I'm still a little bit up in the air on it. I guess my biggest question is, if we do this amendment, there's no way the state, I guess, Al, you hit on this, too, could come into Corrine Township and say, "Well, you're going to be one of the three places in the county."
Not under the current statute.
And see, where'd be that big a deal if somebody had to have it medically? Butler County's four miles down the road. I don't think it's good for the township. That's all I have to say.
Okay, at this point, I have no comments. The Chair would entertain a motion to accept this as written.
So moved.
As presented, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We move to second, that we accept the text amendment for 28ZA, 2018-01, concerning medical marijuana. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ferring?
Yes.
Mr. Grody? Mr. Grody?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Mr. Westfall?
Aye. Motion carried. Next on the agenda, is there an informal concept review? We have none. Next is old business, do we have any old business? Says none.
No.
This is new business, do we have any new business? Administration have anything they'd like to say?
We have no applications for the May meeting, uh, yeah, May meeting, so our next meeting won't be till June.
Okay. Okay. Is there any announcements, other than there won't be a May meeting? Next meeting will be June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Westfall, just a comment?
Yes.
Our commission should extend words of congratulations to Mrs. Lecount for the arrival of her second child, not too long ago, is it?
About three weeks ago, wasn't it? Yeah.
If you would extend those congratulations to her on behalf of all of us.
We will.
Thank you. Now, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.